I've never tried this before. Good to see you. You keep looking there like that?
Oh, I've been called everything.
How many people sit in it?
If I can have everybody's attention, we'll get started on our special presentation night. I want to recognize some very special ladies, and I'm gonna come down front in just a second and do this. We've got, you know, remember last council meeting, we recognized the state championship boys' basketball team. Today, we're going to recognize the national cheerleader championship team from North Little Rock. So, these girls not only are state champs, they are worldwide champs. Isn't that right, girls?
Yeah.
These young ladies are so special. They're with the Jam Fest Cheer and Dance National Championship Competition. It's what they won. They're from our Parks and Recreation Department. This just goes to show you what a wonderful youth program we have at North Little Rock Parks and Rec. And Bob Rhodes and your staff do a wonderful job. Also, I want to recognize our coach is Trinity Johnson, and we're gonna have Trinity come up with the team, too. Is a senior at North Little Rock High School and has been a volunteer coach ever since. She was, she started out as a nine-year-old, and she went all through the program, and for the last, I believe, four years, she's been on the North Little Rock High Cheerleading Squad. So, Trinity does this as a volunteer. She is a winning coach and a winning young woman, so we're really proud of her, too. So, I'm gonna walk down to the front, and we're gonna have a few photos real quick. We met a little bit earlier in the, in my office, and each young lady and I, we got our picture made in the mayor's office, which was something really special. So, instead of doing individual pictures, we're gonna do a group picture. But what I wanna do is read everybody's name, okay? And then see, if y'all turn around and look out there, you can see yourself on TV. That's going out all over. So, y'all squeeze back, and when I call your name, raise your hand. How's that? Okay? Ayana Jones, Samaya Bryant, Trinise Blakely, Tanaya Turner, Malaysia Sims, Armani Woods, Heaven Conley, Shanaya Seldon, Ashley Kimball, Daphne Workman, and Danaya Workman. Dania Workman. And I almost had it all the way through. And India Duckett, is that right? India Duckett, there you go. And then, of course, this is Trinity, right here, is our coach, and she is a world-class coach, world-class cheerleader, and we are so proud of our champs. Put your hands down, let everybody get a good picture. Okay, parents, is everybody done? Okay, ladies, thank you. We're all very proud of you so much.
Can they do a cheer? Can they do a cheer?
Can they do one here?
Can they do a cheer?
There was a child who couldn't be seen.
And I wanna see it.
Sure. Come on back, girls. We wanna make sure we get everybody's pretty face.
I wanna see it.
Okay. Y'all scoot in just a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, you came in late.
Yeah. When I called the roll at 6:30, you were there.
Okay. Thank y'all. Thank you. Congratulations. You know, it's always a wonderful opportunity for me to do anything when it has to do with the military or with the Veterans Association. We are a military town. A lot of people think we're a railroad town, which we are, but we also have a kinship to the military, and I do, too. And we've got three young people from North Little Rock that are going to represent us at two different military academies. So, we wanted to kinda pat them on the back, say, "Job well done." Job well done on becoming a soldier, and we're certainly proud of you getting into the military academy, but also your future plans as being in the military. So, we've made a special day for each one of you, so I want to bring greetings. Being known to all that I, Joe Smith, Mayor of North Little Rock, do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of April 2013 as Grant Strobel Day in honor of your appointment to the United States Coast Guard Academy. Grant. Good? Good. Thank you. Grant, by the way, is the son of Michael and Debbie Strobel, who are just wonderful people and have been participating with programs with our school, our city. And also, if I'm not mistaken, your older brother just graduated recently from the Coast Guard Academy?
Yes.
Yeah, wow. What a special mom and daddy. Be proud, huh? So, that's great. Next, it's the same greetings, but this is to Sam Scott in honor of your appointment to the United States Air Force Academy. Sam? Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're proud of you. Good. Let's make sure, we done? Good. Good. Sam is the, is the son of Shan and Joy Scott, so I know y'all are very proud. And we save the best for last. Greetings, same as always. What a special, neat deal this is for Lauren Rainbow Day. Lauren, in honor of your appointment to the United States Air Force Academy. Wow. Are you gonna, are you gonna be a pilot?
Hopefully.
Good. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, be great. Yeah. Lauren, by the way, hold on a minute, is the daughter of Dr. David and Heather Rainbow. So, Dr. and Mrs. Rainbow, congratulations to you, too. Jan, whatever you want.
I would like to have a picture of the three of you.
Okay.
And I'd like to add that they have represented you.
All three of them. Well, thank you very much. We'll come back up unless the group of us, well, the people at home probably didn't hear that, but all three of these individuals have served on the Mayor's Youth Council for the last three years, so you can tell that they are wonderful giving.
I have your request. I feel like I'm...
Come, come, come. Hey, if Jan Choal wants it, Jan Choal gets it. That's just the way it is.
He'll be all right. I don't know about the other guy.
Good? Good? You bet. Congratulations again. You make us all proud. Thank you.
Mayor Smith, Mayor Smith, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
Ms. Choal, out of how many appointments in Arkansas were on the Mayor's Youth Council? No, I mean, no, no, out of Arkansas, how many? I saw, I saw...
We all know for the Air Force Academy, because Grant also had an appointment to the Air Force Academy, the Coast Guard, three out of the eight appointments to the Air Force Academy were on the Mayor's Youth Council.
Wow. That's amazing. That's amazing for the whole state, three out of eight.
Okay, repeat what she just said, Debbie.
She said, "Three out of eight appointments for the Air Force Academy were on the Mayor, North Little Rock Mayor's Youth Council," out of all of Arkansas, which is amazing.
Isn't that special? And we can thank Jan Choal for that, too, a little bit, 'cause Jan is certainly our leader and has been for a number of years. So, if any of you that are here for the presentations that want to ease on out, now would be a good time. You certainly don't have to leave. We'd love for you to stay, but I know the young girls might wanna leave, so if y'all wanna kinda ease that way, Connie, you can start easing towards the microphone and...
Charlie, do you recognize those cheerleading uniforms? Do you recognize those cheerleading uniforms?
They were the same color they were when we were there.
In the 60s, yeah.
Yeah. You were one of them.
Can I even look at that far back?
I was talking about him, I can do.
I am.
I was asking you.
Oh, yeah. It's on, it's on a street. Yeah. Saturday.
Okay, great. I'm so proud of all those young people. Okay, looky here. Connie, you've got 17 minutes, and you only wanted 15, so that's good. Connie, of course, is the chairman of the Public Land Development Task Force. She has done, Connie Phillips has done a wonderful job bringing that group together. Some big decisions were made, and she is here tonight to make her presentation on behalf of the task force. So, Connie, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Mayor Smith, North Little Rock City Council. First, I'd like to also recognize the other members of the task force that are here this evening. Debbie Strobel, who you just met, Kevin Newsom, Evelyn McCree, David Holstead, John Crowe, Thomas Pennell, Roger Marlin, and I think that's all. Some of them had conflicts this evening and were unable to be here. Just a little background, most of you know this, but for the audience, the task force was established by former Mayor Patrick Hayes in the fall of 2012. And our purpose was to review the parcels of city land owned by the city of North Little Rock and receive input from the residents. Following this review, the task force was to present its recommendations to the city council, which we're ready to do this evening. Here's just a map to show kinda the depth of how many pieces of city property are actually in the city that are owned by the city and that we reviewed. We met several times since October of 2012 and did a review of 140 city-owned parcels. In accordance with the resolution that was adopted by the council, the task force also held a public meeting on February 21st of this year, to which all citizens of North Little Rock were invited. We put notices out to the various community groups, through the neighborhood leadership council, and through the media to make sure that anybody that wanted to provide input on the city parcels was able to do so. In addition, we availed ourselves of the resources of various North Little Rock city departments, particularly Mr. Boyle's Planning, Mr. Rhodes in Parks, Bernadette Rose, who is in the mayor's office and fit for life. We also had guidance from Alderman Height and Baxter, and we wish to thank them for their guidance. Lastly, we received input from local developers, North Little Rock, Argenna, the riverfront area, bicycle and running trails, community gardens, and the Arkansas River connections. We wanted to look at everything, not just as it is, but what we think it could be, and to make sure that we were in accordance with some of the other plans that the council has laid out for the city. Our report is based on the following criteria, as stated in that resolution. Which city property must remain in public use for its current purpose? Examples of that would be City Hall, the library, the airport, and others. Which city property seems best suited for development as a park or green space, a neighborhood garden, a conservation area, or other public use? And which city property should be sold for economic development and income? Land to remain in its current use for public purposes, a good example of that is the North Little Rock Airport. Even if we wanted to change its current use, we decided we didn't want an airport anymore, we wanted another city park. We would not be able to do that because as the land was given to us from the state, it would revert back to the state if we were to decide to change its use. And similarly, things like City Hall here, our community buildings, the trails that we've built, obviously utility easements, rights of way, the railroad easements and rights of way, and our parks and community gardens. We then looked at certain large parcels, and we'd like to visit in detail tonight our recommendations for those large parcels, and here's a list of them here. The first one, really thinking outside the box. We looked at Pike Avenue and the large amount of green space that runs pretty much from Pike Plaza down to what was the code enforcement building. It's a right-of-way on the west side of Pike. The lots are only about 120 feet deep. Use of them would be restricted by no curb cuts onto Pike Avenue, and so it, they don't really seem to fit any type of economic development. We recommend that this becomes a park. We have swings and slides, soccer goals, basketball goals, grills, so that the neighbors can come out on the weekends or after work at night and enjoy the area and have other similar park equipment installed. In addition, the building, the former code office that's at 20th and Pike, would be converted to community use. Storage of garden equipment, and a garden developed on the south side of that building. It could also be used, because it's in the small offices now, for things like maybe art classes or other things that the community in that area would like to have. Lastly, consideration of safety and the pedestrian traffic crossing Pike Avenue. We'd fence along the sidewalk. And also, give, like, consideration given to closing some half-block parcels that are not at the stoplights. We know that seems really out of the box, but it would provide some protection for people that are driving down there and have people crossing in front of them frequently, particularly in the evenings. When we talked to the public representatives that came to our meeting, they seemed really excited about that. They thought it was a good idea. They did ask what kind of fence we were looking at, and our recommendation would be not chain link, but something along the lines of what we put up close to the railroad, that would make the neighborhood a little prettier. East and west of Bering Cross Bridge, these parcels comprise of approximately seven acres. We all know because of their proximity to the railroad that noise is a factor. We would like to recommend utilizing this for economic development. We also discussed the influence that the railroad has had on the development of North Little Rock and, in particular, the Bering Cross neighborhood. And we suggest contact possibly with Union Pacific to determine if there's interest in partnering with the city to develop a railroad museum at that site. Smart House Way, this parcel provides 5.8 acres of urban infill property. Power lines have been relocated, and we do recommend utilizing this also for economic The Southern Cotton Tract, North Little Rock owns property off Buckeye that was given to the city by the Southern Cotton Company. This parcel comprises about 15 acres and is currently leased by the city, providing income from warehousing and rail yard purposes. We would recommend no change at present, but to also utilize it for economic development should the status of those rentals change. Young Road, this property is north of the North Shore Business Park near Maumell Boulevard and the I-430 interchange. It's comprised of approximately 19 acres off of Young Road and has been available for redevelopment. There is limited infrastructure and access off Young Road, and the task force would recommend utilizing it for economic development. The Big Rock Quarry, the piece of land that kinda brought us into existence. This is a parcel of land purchased with city funds with a particular use in mind. The River Trail was constructed along the Arkansas Riverbank, and the property in that riverbank provide about 60 acres. Based on task force discussions, public input, it is recommended that the property be utilized solely for public use, no commercial activity. Options discussed were a park, a green space, a conservation area with assistance for development and maintenance, perhaps from some conservation group, or some type of commercial use that would not interfere with neighboring land. And in this case, we were talking about very limited concerts or other social-type activities that would be held on a very limited basis, certainly not, you know, annually or every month, but something very limited. Last input that we had from some of the citizens was that they want it left to us. Burns Park, in the recent past, a proposal for development of approximately 65 acres in Burns Park has been discussed. This development would consist of lodge and other commercial venues that would support the numerous sporting events that the park hosts each year. Most of us were not aware of exactly how many tournaments take place there, but Vicki Jones, who served on our task force and is on the Parks Commission, told us it's over 50. Not only are there sporting events, but also the people that come with them to see those sporting events, and lodging, and restaurants, and that sort of thing. So, if the development were completed, it could host these activities. You could also have family reunions, weddings. Some of us are familiar from the corporate world, that companies take, executives or managers, or people off-site to do training or have a retreat for the day. You know, this would be an excellent opportunity for a lodge to be used. We would recommend pursuing this development with the understanding a land swap will be required. One thing to note is this is not now sitting where the prior interest was. It's actually at X-150. The lodge would be not up on the hill where they looked at before, but in an area that would be visible to the freeway and people that are traveling through North Little Rock. From time to time, the city obtains residential tract due to abandonment or gifts. The task force recommends that wherever practical, these parcels be listed for sale to owners of neighboring land or anyone else. Alternatively, they could be looked at for community gardens, park parks, or green space. Lastly, although we reviewed all 140 parcels of the city land, we really can't go through and read off the list of each one of those and tell you where they are, but we have, and we'll submit a list to Mayor Smith to distribute to all of you so that you can look through those, where we said no change or not applicable because the property's been sold, economic development, park, and those sorts of things. The task force also discussed the future of public land review in the city of North Little Rock, and some of the members hope that a board be established to review use of public land in the future prior to sale, designating it as park or for public use, and in particularly, Big Rock Quarry property. We'd like to thank you, Mayor Smith, former Mayor Hayes, and some of the members of the city council, this opportunity to serve our neighbors and our community, and if you have any questions or comments, we'd be glad to answer them.
Questions? Ms. Ross?
I'm just curious in the future board, a future task force board, can you kind of elaborate on that? Any thoughts as far as, I mean, would you hold monthly meetings or just on an as-need basis?
I think it was as-need basis.
Okay.
You know, if when some development in the future for the quarry were to go forward, then the board would then convene and assist with that.
So, the board would be just for the quarry for any city property?
We had conversation on both sides. Some said just for the quarry, and others said no for any, you know, big projects.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just want to thank y'all, everyone that served. That's a huge job. Certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Connie, I, too, wanna say thank you very much. I know that you spent a tremendous amount of time, and all of you that were on the board, we're very proud of your service. You can take paychecks up on the way out. They, you know, I mean, y'all love your city. I know most all of you on that task force, and you did it out of a love for your city, and I think the information you brought back to us will give us what we wanted, what we needed. As I told Connie last week when we met, this helps our economic development staff so much, because now they know what, like, what we want them to go sell and develop and what we want to be left alone, so they've got a lot more direction. And I know Todd is, will be grateful to be put in stone. Now, I don't know what the councilor, what the next step is. Do we need to bring in a resolution supporting this recommendation, or what?
I would suggest that be adopted by the council based upon this presentation, the resolution, and approving and adopting the recommendation board as amended by the council for the amendments wanting to be made.
Okay. Mr. Taylor?
Mayor? I'm a little confused because, I mean, yeah, we have recommendations from planning commission and, and other commissions in the city all the time, and we never adopted a resolution accepting their recommendations. We, as the governing body, just make our decision based on what we think, we take their recommendations, but we make, make the best decision based on our role in the city.
Let's try it.
I think, first of all, I'm gonna say thank you to the people that I served with on the task force. I was amazed at the open-mindedness that they entered that, those meetings about dealing with each of these 140 parts of the land, and I just want to say thank you for your dedicated thought and research and, and comments. You know, some of them wanted to talk fly, and we kept them, kept them straight and open-minded. Anyway, thank you. The other thing that, that I wanna enter, possibly Alderman Taylor's comment was, I think it was understood that going into this task force that there would be legislation brought to the city council, whether it be an ordinance or a resolution, based on their recommendations, and Alderman Baxter and I are willing to co-sponsor that bit of resolution that if, that's what we need to do as far as the council is concerned.
I think accepting their recommendations as a resolution is not binding. I mean, it would be strictly as a recommendation that we accept and receive their recommendation. If we decided to overrule their, the task force, we certainly could.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I mean, why don't we, I mean, why do we not do that for, for all the commissions, boards for the city? And it's just a question.
Counselor?
Counselor.
Well, this particular board was set up specifically to address the issues that the mandate to the board was meet and report back to the council. It would be fitting for the council to do a resolution accepting the report as subject to whatever amendments or reservations the council wants to make, and accept the report, and not necessarily adopt the report as gospel or as, as the law of the, of the city, but to accept it and to thank the specific, special board that was authorized by the council, and then to, to...
you for your dedicated thought, and research, and, and comments. You know, some of them wanted to talk fly, and we kept them, kept them straight and open-minded. Anyway, thank you. The other thing that, that I want to enter, possibly Alderman Taylor's comment was, I think it was understood that going into this task force that there would be legislation brought to the city council, whether it be an ordinance or a resolution, based on their recommendations, and Alderman Baxter and I are willing to co-sponsor that bit of resolution that if, that's what we need to do as far as the council is concerned.
I think, accepting their recommendations as a resolution is not binding. I mean, it would be strictly as a recommendation that we accept and receive their recommendation. If we decided to overrule their, the task force, we certainly could.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I mean, why don't we, I mean, why do we not do that for, for all the commissions, boards, for the city? And it's just a question.
Councillor?
Councillor? Well, this particular board was set up specifically to address the issues that the mandate to the board was meet and report back to the council. I think it would be fitting for the council to do a resolution accepting the report, subject to whatever amendments or reservations the council wants to make, and accept the report, and, and not necessarily adopt the, the report as gospel, or as, as the law of the, of the city, but to accept it and to thank the, the specific, special board that was authorized by the council, and then to, to then, based upon that, the city planners could look at the future, to see what the will of the council is based upon receiving this report. It's more guidance than anything else. It's not really an ordinance or carved in stone, but it would be a matter in which closed the loop, having created this commission to accept the report.
That's a good answer. Is that enough for you?
That help?
If...
It was just a question.
All right. Well, we had, we got just an answer. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, well, I'm going to close this presentation, series of tonight's meeting. Connie, again, thank you, you and the task force for doing this for us. So we'll consider ourselves adjourned for about two minutes, and then we'll start the regular meeting.
And if anyone wants to speak at any time during this meeting, they need to sign now or not speak.
We can get everyone to take their seats, please. We need, I just, he's going to sneak in.
Good, how are you? I'll tell you what. He wanted, he thought you wanted to hold it.
Hey, Debbie? Okay, we can have everyone's attention, please. We'll cause the meeting roll to order, and we'll call roll.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Hyde?
Here.
No, you're not.
He stepped outside a bit.
Witcher?
Present.
The quarry has spread.
Okay, Alderman Fauch is going to pray and pledge for us.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to meet once again and discuss the business of residents of here in North Little Rock. I ask for a special blessing for all the families and victims of Boston bombing and the industrial explosion and fire in West Texas. Please look for our first responders. They answer calls every day, each and every time they respond to a call. It could be a life or death situation, and need their blessings. Also, please look after our men and women in uniform serving around the world. They face harm every day, and need your support. In God's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and the nation of the republic of which is safe, one one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and eternal.
Second.
On the motion to per the minutes from four eight, and also the special meeting minutes, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Hyde is still out. Witcher?
Thank you, Ms. Whitby. I'm going to jump a little bit out of order right now. Randy Naylor, Randy, I saw you come in. Randy wants to tell us a little bit of something about all the hard work that he and his committee are doing.
Mayor, letting me come up here tonight, I just wanted to come here to promote the great North Little Rock cleanup, and it is May the eighteenth, and a lot of our boards worked really hard to make this thing happen, and we would just really like to see a good turnout, a little bit of, last year, when we did the same event, we had one hundred and twenty-eight volunteers, six hundred and forty volunteer hours, we had fifteen different teams go out. We did an estimated thirteen thousand dollars worth of work, cleaned up fifteen miles of streets, ninety bags of litter that was collected, and we just feel like that we're going to keep doing this every year and grow it, and, you know, we've really got a nice city, and we're all proud of it, and we want to keep it clean. So we appreciate anybody that come out and help. You can sign up on our Facebook page, and everything is done online. There's no sheets to fill out. If you can just go straight to the Facebook page, if keep North Little Rock beautiful, you can do everything right there, and you'll get a phone call from one of us, or bring you some trash bags, or maybe, and whatever we need to do to make the cleanup. And I brought some flowers, if you pass those around, if everybody would have one. Just appreciate y'all letting me come here tonight, and hopefully we'll see y'all at the, after the cleanup, we'll have a celebration at Lake Wood Village, like we did last year. For those that sign up by, we're trying to get everybody to sign up by May the first. If not, we're not going to turn nobody down, but we'd like to get them in by May the first. We order t-shirts, and so, t-shirts and pizza for everybody that participates, and little certificates of appreciation for groups that come out that day.
We, we thank you, Randy, for all your hard work, your committee, you're just never-ending helping us out as best you can, and I think we had two cleanings, I believe.
Yeah, Mayor.
Then we do one in the fall, maybe, and, and so thank you for what you do. We'll try to advertise this as much as possible, maybe the eighteenth is the date. Okay. Thanks, Randy. Okay, we're into communications.
Move we accept, file one through ten.
Second. You have one, one pulled?
Five and six.
Okay, we're going to pull five, we're going to pull six, so we're going to have a motion to... I'm sorry. It looks right.
Seven and eight.
And nine, then.
All right, how about approval on three floor, Ms. Whitby? How about a motion and approval on two floor?
Uh, we've already got that. One through four, Ross?
Somebody gets a five, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Okay.
You want my title, or red?
Red in entirety, please.
I ran them to the members of the North Little Rock City Council from Charlotte Thomas Mayor's Office dated April eleventh, twenty thirteen, regarding alcohol beverage permit request for your information. I'm close to a copy of the assignment and contents of officials form from the state of Arkansas Alcohol Beverage Control Division. The following applicant has applied for a new on-premises wine permit. Michael W. Gonzalez, McCann Mall, Stadium twelve, thirty-nine twenty-nine McCann Boulevard, North Little Rock, and there is a fifteen-day comment period, please, period referred to in the final paragraph of the comment page.
Ms. Witcher?
Mayor, while we're excited to have the new theater at McCann Mall, and while we appreciate the things that they've done on a local basis, and the impact they've made, this is one of those items that I, that several of us in that area have concerns about. I would ask, there's a fifteen-day period dated the eleventh, or maybe the twenty-fifth, that we would have to check, and I would ask that you consider writing a letter to the Alcohol Beverage Commission that was, uh, this permit. I think Mr. Hyde has something to add to it, and I know the girls do.
Ms. Ross?
I called and spoke with Mr. Gonzalez today. I don't know if he is here or not. Yes, I had some questions, because I know that, you know, in some cities that they do, you know, they do have certain areas, and they have dinner and a movie, and they serve alcohol, and I think there were just some question, I had questions. What type of alcohol? Where is it going to be served? Because I wanted to go up there, and I wanted to make sure that I understood what they were going to be doing.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, sir. We do this across the nation, for one of the largest, we are the largest unit in the nation, but we incorporated this at a number of locations where we obviously controlled it. It's, it's a concession item, it's served, and it'd be a designated register that would be poured into a clear cup, pour beer and wine, that somebody would be able to consume inside the auditorium. We asked of the ABC as well, they came with me as far as checking my building and making sure that we're covered, you have ninety-six cameras across the, across the theater. We're extremely secure, and obviously, we don't want it to take on any liabilities as well, but we also want to offer an extended service to our patrons, and it's something that we haven't offered here, and that it's never been offered here, so that's something we would love to be able to do.
Ms. Ross?
I, my other question, and I ask you this, and just so that I can get the same answer twice, so this is open to any theater, I mean, into any movie, there's twelve, there's a cinema, I mean, twelve. So it doesn't matter if it's a children's movie, it doesn't matter what it is, you would be able to take your money into that.
Correct, correct. And it obviously adds up to our patrons, you gotta, people don't tend to drink in kids' movies, but I know that our, our potential people would be able to. Due to our higher prices, we're not those facilities where you can come in and buy some beer at a dollar fifty, a glass, it just doesn't work like that, so, premium pricing, it just offers another opportunity for you enjoy a feature, and other choice. But it's up to them, yes.
Ms. White?
I acknowledge Alderman Witcher's request to have this, have this denied, but I'd like to also say that if that doesn't have, some more information needs to be gathered, this is good, thank you for coming, and I think that our police need to be involved in this discussion as well, to see what kind of, what kind of issues they might be facing, having this, this audience having alcohol available, and if there are any problems with that.
Robinson?
My question is, you said that you're currently buying this service to patrons in other places. What cities?
We've opened...
Just a few.
We, pretty much, Miami, we've opened up in Texas, we've opened, it says in Houston, San Antonio. I've opened two locations myself in San Antonio, Texas, where we offer actually a full bar, where we serve it inside with wait service and whatnot. It's, we send a bar locations, you name Austin Raptor House, a lot of different communities are offering this thing as, as an extended service.
Mr. Hyde?
Same question, but how many locations have denied your request?
I'm not aware of.
Have you, have you had some denials?
None of, I've been affiliated with have denied, it didn't take much to get that in there at all.
Mayor, I can only remember one other time, since I've served on city council, that a liquor permit request has come up that we've questioned. What the process, what process is it proper for us to go through, Mr. City Attorney? If, if the city council and the city of North Little Rock opposes this, if that's, if that's our decision, or we won't make our comments known to the agency, what is the legal process that we need to go through to do that?
If the city council wishes to oppose this request...
If the city council wishes to oppose this request, they need to make that known by voice vote, and then a letter can, we, our office will draft the letter to the ABC board indicating that this council opposes the granting of this license. The license is within their purview whether to grant or deny.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I have another question. Now, you said, you vote, you, this is another movie theaters. Now, is it open to all of them, or do you just have certain, certain movies that you can take alcohol in?
No, no, anywhere with provided services, or that type of item in the concession, it was, they were able to consume at any point, or any theater that other chose.
Do you have any in Arkansas that you vote, I mean?
We've only have two in Arkansas, for Regal Entertainment Group, and that's in Brackenridge.
And Brackenridge, that's their alcohol?
They do not.
Okay.
It's just a question. I mean, what's the difference between the movie theater and the restaurant downstairs that serves Black Words and Hot Dogs and all those types of stuff, and Red Lobster, or any place that serves beer? I'm just, it's, what's the difference? Other than you're watching a movie? It's just a question.
Mr. Fauch?
Are there any controls in place for preventing an adult from buying an adult beverage, going into a darkened theater and handing it off to a minor?
It's the equivalent to a restaurant, like you said, if somebody's at a table and they hand over a drink, and if somebody's watching, then yes. If nobody's watching, then no. We have ABC that does, and this is a long talk that I had with the, the representative from there. He, he basically said he'll be doing spot checks as far as us, or, I mean, asking for IDs, him going in auditoriums and looking for this particular item, this is something that would be well within our control for us.
All right, I think our option is to ask Ms. White, does she like to come in?
Have, have you approached Brackenridge for this license to sell?
No, not, not as of yet. This was basically, we, we opened this theater, obviously, you know, for, with a partnership of Simon Properties, to generate some, you know, patronage to malls in, in the area, and being able to offer a new facility like we have, we've incorporated a lot, everything that's new in the industry into our building. This is just the, the next step to it, and, and one of the things they would consider would be, you know, depending on the, the result that we brought in, Bracken would be the next one to, to see if that was something that they wanted to visit.
My suggestion would be, let's vote, accept the communication, and then if you want to voice vote, we certainly can, can do that. So, let's accept the communication. That's what the council has told me to...
Ms. Ross?
This is just a question. Okay. Chuck E. Cheese sells beer, I guess in, in the ballpark, so I don't know, I'm not ready to vote on it, because I haven't had time to think this out, because I just called Mr. Gonzalez today, and I really haven't had time to look at it. As far as voting, I'm not ready to vote on anything right now. I want to do a little more research and thinking on this, but I just, I don't know, I have, I'm not ready to vote on it.
Okay. I believe we need, do we not need to vote to accept it, councillor?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's vote.
To merely accept, like, the, the communication, they're not, this council wishes to express its support or opposition for this permit, applications and...
Ms. Whitby? You're saying no?
Don't have a motion yet.
How about a motion to accept this communication?
I'll move.
Tell me, I'll second that, but my, I have another question, though. If we want to make it known to the ABC, we support it or don't support this, how many days do we have to do that?
Three days.
Pardon me? It was filed on the fourth.
Fifteen days. The twenty-fifth would be the day...
Three days. And we can get that out in, in the morning, if you so choose.
Like, can I just, in the past, if you make a motion to accept and file the communication, and you're accepting and filing it as it is, in the past, when you opposed one, your motion is to accept and file and send a letter to the ABC board?
That, and that's true, we've done that in the past, but you can, those can be done conjunctively or disjunctively. Whenever we vote to approve and accept a communication, all we're doing is saying, this city council has said that we will make that letter a part of our official documents, file that in our official record at our city, but whether we oppose it or support, I think it's a matter, and that's within the purview of the council.
To make sure on my end that I'm handling my part correctly.
Could we not ask for an extension of time, and, to the ABC board, if they would extend the time and then make this decision next week, next week?
Yes, sir.
And this is, in the question, this is a statement, there's, there's beer at bowling alleys, there's beer at restaurants all up and down, Main Street, I mean, you get a beer almost anywhere, and then there's, I remember, what's her name, Ross, and she said, Chuck E. Cheese, my goodness. And, you know, people, I mean, there are going to be bad people in every situation. Will it, will it be somebody that, give it to somebody that I'm supposed to? Yeah, they do it at liquor stores around here every single day, and not supposed to do it, but that's what the law is for. So it's to catch those people and to punish them accordingly. I don't see, I don't see a reason to punish a business because they don't serve beer. I mean, you want to drink a beer, drink a beer, and you're responsible, and don't get drunk, and don't, and don't drive, I mean, just, you know, we're all responsible for the actions.
Okay. Thank you for your statement. We have a motion and a second to accept the communication, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to make a motion, that the letter, that, that the city sends a letter to the ABC, voicing...
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that the letter, that, that the city sends a letter to the ABC, uh, voicing our opposition to, uh, their approval of this, uh, permit.
Second. Any discussion? Let's call roll on that one, please.
On the motion for a letter opposing Ross?
Pass.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
No.
Robinson?
Pass.
Actor?
Pass.
Fouch?
No.
Hyde?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next communication, number six.
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
Then anyone that's opposed to this, they are still, you know, you still have the option to go to the ABC hearing, I mean, the, the police, if he is opposed to it, he can send a separate letter also. So, I, I just want to say that, you know, if there are individuals in the community that are opposed to it, they can go to the, you know, the ABC hearing.
Well, Chief Davis is on his head in the back. Okay, number six.
Number six, uh, do you want it read?
Please.
A letter dated April 11, 2013, Durham Mayor Smith enclosed, you'll find a check of $100,000 given to the Arkansas Sports Hall of Fame for the construction of a conference center underneath the Reston Arena. At this time, we are uncertain as to whether or not we will go forward with the construction. Therefore, our organization thought it in the best interest of both parties to return the monies to the city of North Little Rock. Please let the Alderman who went to bat for us know how, how much we appreciate their efforts, particularly Murray Whitaker. When and if the time comes for us to move forward, we'll be back in touch. We appreciate the city's willingness to work with us and are proud to be a part of North Little Rock's economic development. Sincerely, Ray Tucker, Executive Director.
Move accept file.
Second. Question, Mr. Baxter?
Mayor, my question is, is because this fund, these funds originally came out of a special project, mine Adam, by law, they had to go back into special projects?
Exactly. Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Whitaker?
Quick comment, Mayor. There were a number of Aldermen that were involved with this. I know, uh, Mr. Hyde was a, a big supporter of this, and Mr. Taylor was instrumental in, in helping, and Ms. Robinson, and, uh, and Ms. Ross was, was involved. Uh, you know, I, I know that they appreciated it. Uh, we all felt as though it would be a good venue for North Little Rock, and it would, would help us develop an additional hotel space, uh, adjacent to that facility, and unfortunately, the, they couldn't raise the money that, that they needed to. But we appreciate the mayor's support, your support, when you, you were, you were out, out-
When I was over there.
Out in your land.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Tucker called and talked to me at length, uh, about their issues, and I, I told him that when one door opens, or one door closes, another door opens, and we are currently looking at some other options, uh, that we might use that economic development grant from federal government. That, uh, it's a million dollars, and we certainly don't want it to disappear. So, uh, Todd Larson and, and his team, and Kerry Hardwick, and other options. So, I'm going to bring something back to you, uh, in the next month or two.
Uh, vote. Motion? Ms. Ross?
But will that maybe encumbered, Mr. Simpson, does that maybe have to be encumbered for that? I mean, I know it doesn't have to be, but will it be encumbered in special appropriations for, since you had mentioned that you would like to, well, your mark for that, or?
It's been put back in special projects, and it'll wait for the council to appropriate.
Okay, so nothing on tickets, please.
Ross?
I'm not looking right tonight for some reason.
Motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Communication number seven, do you want it read?
By title?
By title, this is a letter from Betty Weinland, Executive Director, Central Arkansas Transit Authority, regarding the status of CADA's job access reverse community grant, 50/50 grant regarding city service on three routes, additional peak hour bus on leave route and 8 p.m. service.
I just have one comment. This is quite a change from what I've had, uh, pay in the last years, but I just want to speak for our bus riders, and the city have had some opportunities in the last couple of years to ride buses, and there are a lot of people who need our bus service, and, and I hope we'll, we'll make the right decision for those folks.
When Betty sent me the, she sent an email, and, um, I've served on that CATA board for a number of years, and, and I know the challenges they have with funding, and I also know the challenges we have, so I asked her to write me a formal letter so that we would have plenty of time and plenty of notice to be prepared that when we start working on the budget in the fall, that we're going to be hit for another $300,000 or whatever it is to, to fund those routes. And it's a, once you start a route, it's a decade away, so I wanted everybody to be aware of it. Do we have a motion? How about a motion?
Second. Ms. Whitby?
On a motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Number eight?
Could I have you read it, please? Thank you.
A letter to Mayor Smith. The Quapaw Quarter Association is sponsoring a spring tour of homes to be held in the Parkville area May 11 and 12, 2013. Carrie Tyson has requested five mobile food vendors to spend on Sunday, May 12, between 1:00 and 5:00 p.m. Included with this communication is the event application submitted to Neighborhood Services and, and more details of the event submitted by Executive Director Ray Roberts. The following addresses that will be included in this year's tour are 238, 257, 415, 466, and 532 Skyline Drive, and 217 Julie Road. Mobile food vendors are only permitted by special use, and there is not time to make that request to North Little Rock Planning Commission before the event. I am asking you for an executive order to allow this one operation of a mobile food vendor for QQA's Spring Tour of Homes in Historic Parkville. A temporary North Little Rock business license would need to be purchased by vendors and proper Arkansas Health Department documentation available. The event is well planned, and as you know, has been held in other areas of Arkansas. The use of mobile vendors for an event like this has gained popularity in many communities around the country. The QQA's event is in its 49th year and has had mobile vendors in the last years for this event held in the Governor's Mansion District in Little Rock. Additionally, this communication will serve to promote this special, very special event. We are honored to have the Quapaw Quarter choose North Little Rock's Historic Parkville Neighborhood 2013 Spring Tour. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Beth White, Alderman Work One.
Move accept file.
Thank you.
I'm going to motion.
I'm going to, yeah, just if there's any question about this, we also have, um, Ray Roberts here, Quapaw Association, to answer any questions.
I think everybody's is okay with it. I asked Ms. White to write this, um, because I want y'all's opinion. This is a little bit of a dicey issue we're going to have to walk through with these other pieces of legislation. Uh, so, thank you, um, for your, for your executive order. Council, would you do that for me, please? Thank you. On the vote?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Number nine?
Uh, gee, uh, I don't want to read all of that. You can just read it, basically outline it.
Um, this is, uh, from Donna Hardcastle. It's an email regarding the agenda of downtown council's annual report. Um, you want me to, uh, they talk about, uh, 43 flower beds, 40 hanging baskets, 140 container plants, uh, including grass, plants, and trees. Uh, you want me to, I mean, I don't know what you want me to-
I think that's enough.
Okay.
Because this is too much, after I said that, I, I, there's too much to read.
Okay.
Anyway, that's their performance report.
That's all we need, all we were lacking in order to approve the contract tonight.
On there, yes, is the, in January, that we added a performance report to the report.
All right, on the motion?
No motion.
How about a motion?
No, move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Hyde?
Yes.
And Whitaker?
Yes.
Number 10?
My other question, and I ask you this, and just so that I can get the same answer twice. So this is open to any theater, I mean, into any movie, there's 12, there's a cinema script, I mean, 12.
Absolutely. So it doesn't matter if it's a children's movie, it doesn't matter what it is, you would be able to take beer money into that.
Correct, correct. And it, it obviously adds up to our patrons, you gotta, people don't tend to, to drink in kids' movies, but I know that our, our potential people would be able to, uh, do our higher prices. We're not on facilities where you can come in and buy some beer at a dollar fifty, a glass, it just doesn't work like that. So, uh, premium pricing, uh, it just offers, uh, another opportunity for you to enjoy a feature in other choice. Uh, but it's up to them, yes.
Ms. White?
Um, I acknowledge, um, Alderman Whitaker's request to have this denied, but I'd like to also say that if that doesn't happen, um, some more information needs to be gathered. This is good, thank you for coming. I mean, I think that our police need to be involved in this discussion as well to see what kind of, what kind of issues they might be facing having, uh, this, this audience having, uh, alcohol available and if there are any problems with that.
Robinson?
My question is, you said that you're currently buying this service to patrons in other places. What cities?
Um, we've opened up Miami, um, we've opened up in Texas, um, we've opened, uh, it says in Houston, San Antonio. I've opened two locations myself in San Antonio, Texas, uh, where we offer actually a full bar, uh, where we serve it inside with weight service and whatnot. Um, it, it's, uh, we send a bar locations, um, you name Austin Raptor House, uh, the, a lot of different communities are offering this thing as, as an extended service.
Mr. Hyde?
Same question, but in how many locations have denied your request?
I'm not aware of.
Have you had some denial?
None of, I've been affiliated with have denied, uh, we, it didn't take much to get that in there at all.
Mayor, I can only remember one other time since I've served on city council that, that a liquor permit request has come up that we've questioned. What the process, what process is it proper for us to go through, Mr. City Attorney? If, if the city council and the city of North Little Rock opposes this, if that's, if that's our decision, or we won't make our comments known to the ABC, what is the legal process that we need to go through to do that?
If the city council wishes to oppose this request-
If the city council wishes to oppose this request, they need to make that known by voice vote, and then a letter can, we, our office will draft the letter to the ABC board indicating that this council opposes the granting of this license. The license is within their purview whether to grant or deny.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I have another question.
Now, you said, you know, you vote, you, this is another movie theaters. Now, is it open to all of them, or do you just have certain, certain movies that you can take alcohol in?
No, 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 anywhere with provided services or that type of item in the concession, it was, they were able to consume at any point at, or any theater that other chose.
Do you have any in Arkansas that you vote?
I mean-
We've only have two in Arkansas, Four Regal Entertainment Group, and that's in Brackenridge. And Brackenridge, that's their alcohol?
They do not.
Okay.
It's just a question. I mean, what's the difference between the movie theater and the restaurant downstairs that serves Black Words and Hot Dogs and all those types of stuff, and Red Lobster, or any place that serves beer? I'm just, it's, what's the difference? Other than you're watching a movie? It's just a question. Mr. Bass?
Are there any controls in place for preventing an adult from buying an adult beverage, going into a darkened theater and handing it off to a minor?
Um, it, it's the equivalent to a restaurant, uh, like you said, it, if somebody's at a table and they hand over a drink, and, you know, if somebody's watching, then yes. If nobody's watching, then no. Um, we got ABC that does, and, and this is a long talk that I had with the, uh, the representative from there. Uh, he, uh, he basically said he'll be doing spot checks as far as us, uh, uh, I, I mean, asking for IDs, uh, him going in auditoriums and looking for this particular item, uh, this is something that, that would be well within our control for us.
All right, I think our option is to ask Ms. White, does she like to come in?
Have, have you approached Brackenridge, uh, for this license to sell?
No, not, not as of yet. This was basically, we, we opened this theater, obviously, you know, for, uh, with a partnership of Simon and Properties, uh, to generate some, some, you know, patronage to malls in, in the, the area. Uh, and being able to offer a, a new facility like we have, we've incorporated a lot of things new in the industry into our building, uh, this is just the, the next step to it. And, and one of the things they would consider would be, you know, depending on the, the[1180.66]
The plan identifies those things that are existing and also those that are proposed. And we've had some movement between proposed and existing, so that's progress. It also identifies and perhaps adds to things that need to be done. Some of the progress since the last update would be the Levy's for Trail, also the Over Trail, and the Emerald Park Trail. There are other kinds of progress that are maybe of a different nature. There's now signage on bicycle routes throughout the city. This is a very important thing. There's also been a lot of effort devoted to education. The fit-to-school component of fit-to-life has done a great deal to spread cycling education. And when you think of education, that translates into safety to the elementary schools. And that will create a population of students that understand how to cycle safely in the city. There's also the Safe Routes to Schools Initiative. Includes walking, also includes cycling routes. So there's a partnership with the school district. As we reconstruct our schools, we anticipate and change the zoning, anticipate that more people will be able to get to these facilities by walking or cycling. And so the plan emphasizes in a few places the things like infrastructure improvements that are needed, or the need for infrastructure improvements. It doesn't get as specific as which ones, in the areas of particularly the Lakewood Elementary School and Crestwood Elementary School.
Beware of our three minutes, Ms. McNamara.
Okay, I've probably given you enough reasons already.
You've done a great job. I've given you more than three minutes than somebody else on one more than three.
Thank you for the opportunity to participate. And also, I would say that the makeup of the committee included, that updated the plan, included a lot of city employees and other people from the community that were terrific to work with.
You're a great advocate of our trails, Judy. We appreciate you and Doug both. Any other comments in public hearing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick comment. I had an opportunity in January to meet with Mr. Rayla Hood, the Department of Transportation. And one of the things that he emphasized, even though we're going through the difficult times that we are with our budgets, that to him, one of the important things in an integrated transportation plan was the bicycle and pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. And he was going to try to throttle and control how much that part of the budget would be cut, and if anything, he really liked increasing, which is probably not going to occur. But in, they agreed to approve the funding for transportation in this mother cell. So we'll see some results from that.
Very great. Thank you. Ms. Hine?
I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Dow for her service on my bicycle-friendly now Bernadette's Bicycle Friendly Community Committee that she now heads, that I kind of co-head with her. Twelve years ago, I started cycling in North Little Rock and got active in the bicycling community. And there was a trail committee in North Little Rock at that time, of which Judy was a member of that committee. And the mayor commissioned me to go after the Legal American Bicyclist Bicycle Friendly Community Award back in 2007, I believe it was. And it didn't take us long to realize that the Legal American Bicyclist is looking more than just at physical assets. You know, they weren't looking just at trails and length of trails and amount of trails that we have and pass. They were looking at other things, education and awareness and promoting safety and just making the whole community bicycle-friendly. In addition to having trails is what the Legal American Bicyclist has done. Having a bike plan is part of the Legal American Bicyclist requirement that we continually update that plan. And that's what this legislation does, is our updating of that bike plan. At the same time, we're also increasing the amount of, I guess, qualities of our bike plan that the city is receiving. And it's because of people like Judy's service in this Bicycle Friendly Community along with Bernadette and a lot of other people that I could name. We, the city of North Little Rock, are trying to make bicycling awareness, the safety of bicycling aware, and making our communities safer, people to ride their bikes to and from school and to the grocery store and even to the city council every once in a while, maybe. But I would appreciate when it's time for you to vote for this legislation, that you would support the bicycling community, bicycling friendly communities that work and Bernadette's work and all the other people that work on this by bringing us on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are you ready to call this tonight?
If no one else wants to speak during the public hearing, you can adjourn the public hearing.
Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. We can go ahead and put that legislation right now. The bicyclists, if they want to, they can leave when we get through. So can we do that, Ms. Whitby? No objection?
Oh thirteen thirty-six, submitting the Master Street Plan Ordinance seventy-nine thirty-two to update the North Little Rock Bicycle Plan Second reading.
Move to suspend rules place on the third reading.
Second.
Any discussion or motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And Ordinance submitting the Master Street Plan Ordinance seventy-nine thirty-two to update the North Little Rock Bicycle Plan Third and Final Reading.
Have a motion.
Bill adopted.
Any discussion or motion?
Bush and Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you bicyclers. Y'all are a wonderful group. All right, let's go into citizens' public comment on number legislation. We have one individual signed up. Mr. Ard, please sign up for oh thirteen thirty-four.
Any other votes? I have a question. We can chat with him.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. I pleaded with y'all to do something about the snow cone trucks running after hours when it's dark. Rode it up before Mayor Hayes left, and I do appreciate Ms. Alderman White, like, finding getting something together, get it done. Please look out for the children. When it's getting dusty, dark and dark, they go running out for snow cones. And I've tried to call the owner of the company, he has to get all these back. Also, I'd like to make the point of Ms. Whitby made the comment to Mr. Witcher about pedophiles, it's only snow cone trucks from other states and wherever. I think they should have a background check. If I'm not mistaken, Benton has a background check plus a driver's license, license check before you can drive a snow cone truck in the city of Benton. North Little Rock has some great kids, so let's try to protect these kids with things like this. And thank you very much.
Okay. Officer, ready to go into unfinished business?
Okay, oh thirteen thirty-four, Alderman White.
Mayor, I'd like this held till the oh thirteen forty-four, at the end of the meeting, that we can, we need to resolve that other one first before we present this one.
Okay. Can we just set that one aside, Ms. Whitby, and come back to it?
Yes, please, sir.
Consent agenda?
Anybody want to pull anything out of consent agenda? Did the Boys and Girls Club bring what they needed to bring in?
They brought in a very large packet, so this needs to be submitted. You know, the other two that we submitted is communication from Ms. Hardcastle. I don't know how we submit this because it's a huge packet, but if Ms. Whitby can submit that, there are some reports here.
Okay, I just see one of them. I wasn't given one.
Okay, do we need to amend this, to amend in that?
There was nothing, you know, other than a communication on the other cell. I mean, it's not, the other two were not attached to.
Without objection, we'll accept this as a communication and ask Ms. Whitby to attach it. All right, if we're not going to pull any out of consent agenda, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Post name, sign, motion carries.
Mayor, do we have a motion to table?
What?
Consent agenda.
He's asking if you have a motion for the consent agenda.
Okay, well, why don't we do that? Charlie, motions?
Both second.
And Mr. Taylor, seconds.
And the previous asked?
And the previous asked, Ken.
All right, new business?
Miss.
Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution of repeating additional funds for smart meters.
Counsel, start. Do you want to explain this, force?
Absolutely. What we're requesting in regard to reallocation of funds for our smart meter project pertains to things. One is that we want to stay aimfully employed and continue installing smart meters throughout the remainder of this year, throughout the year. We've gotten into a good pace about how many smart meters we put out each month. We put out about fifteen hundred a month. And unless we allocate additional funding, we will run out of meters, and we will stop deploying these. The second piece of that question is what type of meters we're going to deploy directly. If we're going to use meters that do not remotely connect and disconnect, or if we're going to use meters that have that capability to remotely connect and disconnect. The meters with that capability cost about fifty dollars more a meter, so it requires additional funds. Where we've looked at this project, and I've got, if anybody wants to see our decision-making process, there's basically a four-option kind of approach. We have encouraged the option that we would reallocate funds, we would continue working throughout this year, which at the end of the year would leave us, would put us at twenty-six thousand meters deployed. So if we have a total of thirty-seven thousand meters, it would be twenty-six thousand deployed at the end of the year. And we would like to use all remote connect-disconnect meters. Now, they are fifty dollars more, but if we remotely connect or disconnect one of those meters for any reason, for a fire, or for a change in ownership, whether it's for nonpayment or any reason, if you remotely connect or disconnect it at one time, you've paid for that meter. So we've used different types of meters along the way. We've tested it, we've explored it, and it seems to be the best option for our system, and that's the recommendation we're asking for.
I was going to ask a question, is what kind of meter have we installed up to this point?
We installed both.
On a test, kind of on a test basis?
On a test basis, and quite honestly, trying to educate ourselves more about the capabilities of these meters, and they are absolutely fantastic. I think that it's going to change our business operations in the future. But we've tried to forestall making the commitment as to what type of meter we're going to use. Try to put that decision off as long as we can, but really, we just can't put it off anymore. We need to make that decision.
So if we get a more expensive meter, then we're going to go back and replace the ones that?
We're not going to go back and replace the ones that are already deployed. If we have any problems with those meters, of course, they'd be upgraded along the way. These meters have a lifespan of about fifteen years. So the good news is, is, you know, you can look forward to replacing newer and having a more uniform system sooner. The bad news is, is, you know, they're just not made with the same kind of durable components that older meters were made, like where, you know, they last for years. They just don't. These meters last more along the lines of fifteen years, and we'll make sure that as we go, they're upgraded to the new meter type.
I would request that you get with Mr. Sisson in finance and try to figure out a way to start putting money aside for fifteen years now, just a little bit each year, so that we don't get caught up having to replace a whole bunch of them at year fifteen and not have any money for it. I think that's very wise. Mr. Vouch?
Wasn't part of your professors' planning for incorporating the smart meters a reduction in the man power levels because of the ability to remotely connect and disconnect on these parts of technicians, trucks, and all the other costing side?
You're absolutely correct, that part of the objective is to reduce our manpower costs. Right now, we're not realizing any of those benefits really because we're deploying meters and we're realizing the expense of that. And we still have a lot of manually read meters. So until we get those cleared out and we're all smart meters that are remotely read, we're still going to incur those expenses. I don't think that we're looking at laying people off. We're not suggesting that, but I think that we will reduce manpower just a bit.
Ms. Ross?
We have replaced some meters, correct? They have the automatic connect-disconnect on them, don't they?
All of them do not. We have deployed both types of meters.
I thought that was all that we were, okay.
The last order that we put in, they were all remote connect-disconnect meters. The last one that we'd put in, that I guess we ordered those probably in February, and we started this iteration about what are we doing, where are we going? And we said, well, let's order all remote disconnect on this order and try to forestall the decision, get some better analysis, some better information, so we can come to this council and make a recommendation, and you can choose which path you want to go.
Any other questions? Mr. Baxter?
Ms. Carter, a couple of meetings ago, we approved some software that the utilities and accounting department has been put in place. We haven't had any kind of hiccups with that software and these smart meters, correct?
None at all. I hate to say none at all, there's always a hiccup, but it's nothing that's insurmountable. So we haven't hit any problems that have been insurmountable. I think part of that is because we're using vendors that have had a relationship, they've done this before in other cities, they're familiar with our data systems, and they're able to make the systems talk to each other. And that's very important, is to have, you know, the meter data that's being downloaded talk to our billing system. And that's an integral piece that's working well, force.
At the end of 2014, when we have all these installed, we won't have to have the computer system set up where you call in because we'll already know. So that's going to be a great asset. Mr. Witcher?
I am curious, how many of the meters that aren't fully automated have we installed to date?
There's actually of, I can't give you an exact number of meters that we have out of my April numbers back then, but just kind of interpolating and giving you a best guess, I'd say we're over twelve thousand meters out right now. More than half of those meters are not remote disconnect. Sorry, I'd like to give you better news than that. That's not what you wanted to hear.
Mr. Carter, I guess one of the things that kind of troubles me is, the idea was that we're going to have an automated system that could be monitored, and we could, if someone's power went off, that we would know it was off and be able to help them immediately. And also, when we had changes with residency, particularly in apartment areas and rental areas, that we'd be able to switch them off. And to be honest, I'm kind of disappointed that we have gone off another direction, but...
I can tell you that we have deployed our remote disconnect meters right now is at our rental units. That's where they focused on those properties. But I think we see the value in it. By doing more research, we've seen the value in really deploying it on a more widespread basis. But your comments are well taken.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a motion?
No, sir.
Second. Any questions, any comments, on motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen seventy-one, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at five oh three North Olive Street, also known as three twenty-one, three twenty-three West Fifth, in the city of North Little Rock, constituted public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owners to evade said nuisance.
Call public hearing. Anyone here to speak for four five oh three or aka three twenty-one, three twenty-three West Fifth? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen seventy-three, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at four oh one West Twentieth Street, in the city of North Little Rock, constituted public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owners to evade said nuisance.
Call public hearing, four oh one West Twentieth. Four oh one West Twentieth, anyone here to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Second. On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen seventy-four, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at thirteen ten West Tenth Street in the city of North Little Rock, constituted public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owners to evade said nuisance.
Call public hearing, thirteen ten West Tenth. Thirteen ten West Tenth. Anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen seventy-five, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at thirteen oh eight West Tenth Street in the city of North Little Rock, constituted public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owners to evade said nuisance.
Call public hearing, thirteen oh eight West Tenth Street, thirteen oh eight West Tenth. Anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No move. Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen seventy-six, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at seventeen oh eight Beach Street in the city of North Little Rock, constituted public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owners to evade said nuisance.
Call public hearing on seventeen oh eight Beach Street. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, I'm Helen Lee, and I'm here to tell us that we could fix it, and then they said we need to tear it down. So I'm here to find out what do I need to do. I was trying to say that, you know, for the five places here, for the homeless, they go down and run out, it's a five-place, and then they make a five. So that's the one I was trying to say. Get out in the cold.
I believe Mr. Wadley is here. The options that we have is you have thirty days after tonight to get with our code office and our city attorney's office to sign an agreement that you will, and put up a bond, that you will start work on this house within thirty days. So that will be your option at this point in time.
Okay. Get out.
We did fix some of it though already. Not the outside of it, but we haven't decided anything, but the outside has been cured.
Okay, I wouldn't spend any more money on it until you have an agreement with legal.
Oh, okay.
And that's on, when do they do that? To the council?
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning?
Normally, that's Thursday morning at nine o'clock at Code Enforcement's office.
Thursday morning at nine o'clock, it's Code Enforcement's office over on Twenty-Ninth Street.
I think we've been there.
Okay, you have to go back.
We need to go back again.
Then our legal counsel will be there.
How long do they give you? They've got to get rid of all these bricks on it. It's got plenty and plenty of bricks on it, so it's probably, they only give you thirty days?
No.
Yes, ma'am, that's normally how it works. We'll be happy to meet with you and talk to you about all that.
Oh, okay. I can give you a little more time. Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments on seventeen oh eight Beach Street? Seeing none, close that. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen seventy-seven, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at two oh two Cornish Street in the city of North Little Rock, constituted public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owners to evade said nuisance.
Call public hearing, two oh two Cornish Street, two oh two Cornish Street. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh thirteen eighty, Alderman Robinson?
Please call it.
A resolution regarding the provision of school resource officers from the North Little Rock Police Department to the North Little Rock School District.
Ma'am? Absolutely. The purpose of this legislation is not to get rid of resource officers in the schools. This program has been around about twenty years, and the city of North Little Rock has been one hundred percent of the cost for resource officers. Now, that cost, which dates back to two thousand eight, was at four hundred thousand dollars a year. With this legislation, what we're asking our mayor or his designate to do is to sit down with the school district to reassess this program. Due to rising costs and reduced revenues, we want our folks to sit down with the school district and reassess this program, and if at all possible, negotiate. Because right now, the city of North Little Rock is the only city that I'm aware of in the state of Arkansas that is paying one hundred percent of the cost for school resource officers. I've had phone calls. One person from my neighborhood says, if you can increase resource officers, we need more patrolmen on the street to patrol our neighborhoods because our neighborhoods are declining. I've had phone calls from folks from other boards saying, leave this home and let's just increase the amount. Now, if you remember, back in October, when we discussed resource officers, we didn't discuss resource officers, but we talked about the budget. And what we found at the budget back in October was over sixty percent of our budget goes towards uniform officers. The other thirty-seven percent goes to our city and to pay for the other departments. Now, what I was told back in October, if we increased anything in uniform officers, we would have to move money from the thirty-seven percent. Moving money from the thirty-seven percent, what I was told was, may result in layoffs of city employees.[1328.62] I've had phone calls from folks from other boards saying, leave this alone and let's just increase the amount. Now, if you remember, back in October, when we discussed resource officers, we didn't discuss resource officers, but we talked about the budget. And what we found at the budget back in October was over sixty percent of our budget goes towards uniform officers. The other thirty-seven percent goes to our city and to pay for the other departments. Now, what I was told back in October, if we increase anything in uniform officers, we would have to move money from the thirty-seven percent. Moving money from the thirty-seven percent, what I was told was, may result in layoffs of city employees. So my thing is this, now that's what I was told in October, in November. So my thing is, we had a program in place for twenty years. Have we assessed that program? I don't think so. We need to reassess that program and we need to sit down with the district to see if the district can assist in paying some of the costs. Now, Mr. Smith, I know that you're bugging about checking out other states to see what the trends are and what's going on. Now, when we started this resource program back in the nineties, in the nineties, we were part of a trend. We were part of, there were cities in Los Angeles, there were cities in Houston, Texas, that started resource officers when we started out around the nineties. Now, Mr. Smith, those places, are we looking at their resource officers, and this is not financially, but what they're looking at to see how they can have better outcomes for the children that they serve. And so, I know that we're going to continue the program. I'm not sure if we'll continue that four hundred thousand dollars. That decision is based on what this council decides. But with the current, with the current financial situation, I cannot see us paying four hundred thousand dollars for the next twenty years. And also, let me say this, that whilst we negotiate and talk to the district, what I'd like for us to do, because I develop programs on my day job, what I'd like for us to do is to sit down, if it's three years, five years, or seven years, look at the program, let's see what's working and tweak it and if we need to make changes. But I have to say to everyone, Linda Robinson is not for getting rid of resource officers. My thing is, let's sit down with the school district after twenty years, let's sit down with the school district and see if we can reassess and see if we can negotiate with them and see if they can pay part of the cost.
I love your passion. Any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion, second? Any other comments? No motion. Sorry, looking right again.
Now, I'm above this and in no way whatsoever does this mean that I want to do it with one resource officer. I mean, I would have one in your school if we could do this. I understand what Mr. Robinson is saying. Our job in the city council is budgetary and we have to look at all our money, that, you know, it's not our money, it's the residents' money's and we've got to, we've got to get the biggest thing for our buck. And if looking at something and asking the mayor to look at it, renegotiate it, that's not saying that we are against resource officers.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
In doing this, we are not obligating the city or the school to be making any changes or amounts of monetary changes. We're just asking to sit down and talk and negotiate.
Correct. Ms. White?
Okay, my, I had the same question. So this legislation is not going to change anything with the way things are in schools right now. Is that correct? With our resources?
On the motion.
Ross, yes, White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Ordnance, O thirteen thirty-eight, Alderman White and Ross.
Please call it.
Alderman White and Ross.
Do you want to call their legislation?
I'm ready to have it.
Say hi. All right, Ms. White and Ms. Ross, would you like that called?
Yes, please.
Ordnance, submitting ordinance number eighty-five fifteen, which means it's to allow self-serve ice vending unit for property located at forty-two JFK Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move, spin, Alderman White on its third and final reading.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen thirty-nine, Alderman Height.
Do I have a motion?
I do have a motion.
Do I have a motion?
You're all right? You ready? Let's vote.
I'll motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen thirty-nine, Alderman Height.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving request wave driveway requirements of the master street plan for property located along Terry Drive of approved apartment space six in the city of North Little Rock.
Move, spin, rules placed on the third reading.
All readings.
All right.
Just checking.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen thirty-nine, Alderman Height.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving request for certain real property located at fifty-nine oh-one John Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
If we, excuse me, move to waive all readings. Second. On the motion.
Ross, yes, White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen thirty-nine, Alderman Height.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving request for certain real property located at fifty-nine oh-one John Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
If we, excuse me, move to waive all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross, yes, White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen forty-two, Alderman Baxter and Vouch.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving request for certain real property located at fifty-nine oh-one John Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
If we, excuse me, move to waive all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross, yes, White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen thirty-nine, Alderman Height.
Do I have a motion?
I do have a motion.
Do I have a motion?
You're all right? You ready? Let's vote.
I'll motion to adopt, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On emergency Ross.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen thirty-nine, Alderman Height.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving request for certain real property located at fifty-nine oh-one John Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
If we, excuse me, move to waive all readings. Second.
All readings.
All right.
Just checking.
On the motion.
On the motion to suspend all readings, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen forty, Alderman Height.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving request for certain real property located at fifty-nine oh-one John Kennedy Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
If we, excuse me, move to waive all readings.
Second. On the motion.
Ross, yes, White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen thirty-one, Alderman Taylor and Robinson.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow auto sales in the C four zone for certain real property located at fifteen hundred East Broadway in North Little Rock, first reading.
That motion.
Move to suspend the rules and place on the second reading.
Have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow auto sales in the C four zone for certain real property located at fifteen hundred East Broadway in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Do I have a motion?
We just suspend the rules on the second reading.
Have a second. Go ahead. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen forty-two, Alderman Baxter and Vouch.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting conditional use to allow warehouse office with overhead doors in the C three zone property located at the northeast end of Richardson Drive in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
That motion.
We spin the rules on the third reading.
Second. On the motion. Question, Ms. Ross?
Yeah, I think we have a noise violation. Officer Miles was looking at that too, checking the booming. Anyway.
Okay, we have a motion, put it on third reading. Have a second.
Yes. A motion is to suspend all readings, put it on third reading. Ross.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Was it your intent to waive all readings?
It was.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Taylor? Just a point of order. If you're going to, you can waive as many readings as you like, or you can move to suspend the rules and waive all readings.
Okay. Thank you for helping us with that.
No problem, sir.
Mr. Taylor brought this system to us a year or two ago and I'm glad we're starting to start to use it, so you're quite the innovative. I appreciate it.
My virtual, my training from Arkansas.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Ms. Whitney? Please give me one. Move for adoption.
Second.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Vouch.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
O thirteen forty-three, Alderman White.
Before we call it, could I just say something that might get over here? But this, that is a legislation, one is earlier on, O thirteen thirty-four, and then this was O thirteen forty-three. I originally set out to put some regulation on our ice cream truck mobile vendors, and when I did that, and I realized through Mr. White, that we actually have legislation that does need to allow them. So I was in a bit of a quandary how to do this, and I'm quite open to making this right so that we can either allow ice cream vendors, or if this council decides not to have them, based on looking at the ordinance section seventy-four thirty-seven. So I believe I need to do this piece of legislation prior to the one that I had asked for earlier. So please call O fifteen forty-three.
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance submitting section seventy-four dash one and seventy-four dash thirty-seven for the North Little Rock Municipal District.
Ah, they stopped her.
Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Give it to me. Do we have a motion? Get it on the floor. We have no motion.
Oh, some move.
And a second. And a second, get it on the floor.
Second.
All right, now, Mr. Taylor.
I'm just a little confused. You said that section seventy-four thirty-seven says when?
Well, it really doesn't allow us to have mobile ice cream vendors in our city. So it might be a bit of a roundabout way to do it. I'm not sure how I could go ahead with the mobile ice cream vendor legislation I had on. It's been on now for the third council meeting without making this correct in some way.
Mr. Witcher?
Okay, just wanted to give you some history. The way this came about was, we were having issues with individuals standing in the streets soliciting for money and other solicitors. And we determined it was both a danger to those individuals as well as to the motor in public. And it was an issue. And so that's how this came about. And I see your predicament, but I don't do this.
Okay. And I've seen many sides of this too, but I wasn't sure how to handle this either by me and this council.
I guess that's my question too, is that this legislation that you're wanting to amend was our legislation directed at, after two thousand and eleven, wasn't it?
No, this legislation came about, I think, in two thousand and five.
Well, there's people, roadblocks in the city of North Little Rock, they're looking at your window when you pull up to a stoplight. And recently, we had, and Cap Davis, you can verify this, we've had several instances where people have violated this ordinance. But we didn't put this ordinance in to eliminate ice cream vendors. And if, if, so my question is, if we support this legislation as written, will it eliminate ice cream vendors in North Little Rock? Is that your, is that your intent?
My intent is to get this cleared up. Yeah, on this one, that's what we do, yes. But I want this, again, I want this council to make a decision what we need to do. And I do have another legislation about ice cream trucks to make them safer in our city, so.
Mr. Taylor?
Are those the strike rules that we're considering?
Yes.
Yes.
I think the confusion, and I got a little confused also, is that we have to, we have to have one ordinance, and then we're going to come back with the other ordinance to regulate what we just did. I mean, it's hard to understand, and I don't understand it yet.
Well, I mean, if it's a strike rule that we're considering, then actually this will allow it, wouldn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
Right there we are.
Okay, I'm ready to vote.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, it's also going to allow everything else to strike.
Well, not solicitors.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at council here.
As we were working on, as we were working on the regulation of the ice cream vendors, it took our attention that section seventy-four thirty-seven existed, which makes it illegal to sell anything on the street. A ice cream truck sits on the street and someone sells something from it, so therefore, it's illegal. Under this, it could be interpreted in by strict construction, it is illegal to sell anything, including ice cream out of a truck on the street. I think the intent of Alderman White is to strike that part that makes the sale of an item on the street illegal. And then, in the other legislation, which is, O thirteen thirty-four, to regulate that activity of ice cream vendors.
What, what about all the other, other than ice cream vendors? All the other peddlers and stuff? If we, if we pass thirteen forty-three, then it's going to make all peddlers legal. And, but, O thirteen thirty-four doesn't make the other peddlers illegal. So we're opening up, we've got to figure out how to close that up. Would it make some sense to hold these two again and sit down with council? There's got to be an easier way to do this. Ms. Ross?
I just had a question too. When it's between public street and a sidewalk, if there is a sidewalk within ten, ten feet of the public street, I'm just curious, like if you were having a yard sale, then you couldn't put any items within ten feet? Does that get into selling? I don't know.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
If you're having a park sale and you park it on the street with a for sale sign, is that illegal?
The ordinance itself contemplates these one-time sales and in specific exempts those. I do not have the entire ordinance here from right now, but it does. As it is.
And several west coast cities, there are people standing on the on-ramps and off-ramps, on-ramps, selling oranges and other fruits and stuff, but this allowed that once this offering item is stricken, they could stand at any street corner and go up bang on the window and offer to sell five pounds of oranges? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
But there is such a thing that you have a business license.
They have a business license, they could sell it there on the corner, right?
Well, they can't get a business license unless they get a zoning certificate that says they can sell at a specific location.
So we've got, I think we've got a pretty good system right here. I think that there's a different way to get rid of when Ross or White wants to go. I think. Ms. Ross?
In two thousand and five, when this was passed, was this discussed? I mean, as far as not being able to sell on the street?
If I remember correctly, we had instances where people were selling dozens of roses, you know, on Valentine's, mother's day, they were standing on the street corners and, you know, thirty-four on each corner, selling roses all the way here to the surewood city limits, or they, you know, or selling candy, anything, you know, you could sell for a buck or five bucks or ten bucks. And when the traffic was stopped, they were preyed on by, the motorists were preyed on by people trying to collect money via a bucket or trying to sell items. So we put this legislation in to stop all of that, to prevent, you know, and a lot of it's distracting also to drive up and down the major thoroughfare and somebody waving deserve to be protected in their ability to drive down the street without being.
Ms. White.
I completely agree with all these comments, and it would never be my intent for any that happened. However, we do have a dilemma that we do allow ice cream vendors to sell ice cream, and we really don't have legislation that allows them to do it. So I'm going to hold this legislation, go back to the drawing board.
It's your, it's your intention to regulate ice cream trucks?
That was the original purpose in all this.
All right, council, I got that. What?
We're assessing that, and we think we have a fix for it, but we'd like some time to talk.
Okay, all right. Ms. Ross.
Going back to two thousand and five, was there any intent as far, I mean, or any discussion as to how this would affect the ice cream trucks, or is it Swan or Schwann's frozen food salesman that comes to the door? There was nothing, I mean?
No.
No, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
The intent was solicitors, the folks standing on the corner.
Okay, I think, I think we have to bring it in right there, and I guarantee between then, next council meeting, they'll figure it out. So if, if, I'm hearing you say, Ms. White, that you wanna hold this, and we'll get it fixed next week?
I'd like to.
Okay. Can this be, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, so in the meantime, then, there should not be any ice cream trucks on the street?
Well, if we wanna follow the law, but if I can make it as an executive order, we'll leave ice cream trucks alone for two more weeks.
And the Schwann truckers.
And what? And Schwann, yeah.
Mayor, it was, I think, on White's purpose and intent is to regulate, not to eliminate.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
For mostly for safety reasons. Okay. All right, next up, piece of legislation.
Oh, thirteen forty four, Alderman White.
Please tell it.
An ordinance amending section twelve point three, ordinance number seventy six ninety seven, the zoning ordinance regarding the regulation of daycare centers and home daycares, first reading.
Send rules and place it on the first reading.
Second reading.
Second reading, sorry.
Okay. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White, Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amending section twelve point three, ordinance number seventy six ninety seven, the zoning ordinance regarding the regulation of daycare centers and home daycares, second reading.
Have a motion. Have a motion. In a second.
Based on third reading.
Second, Mr. Taylor.
Oh, you can go ahead and ask some questions here in a second.
Okay.
Was that a second?
Oh, Mr. Foster. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White, Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance amending section twelve point three, ordinance number seventy six ninety seven, the zoning ordinance regarding the regulation of daycare centers and home daycares, third and final reading.
Do I have a motion?
Some move.
In a second.
Okay.
And a question, Mr. Taylor.
What about with the, the distance?
Stay.
Is it? So if it's already stated, why do we have to add it?
The distance is.
Prior use. Sorry, prior use. So if, if the daycare wants to set up somewhere, once that daycare is established, then a registered sex offender is not allowed to move within two thousand feet of that facility. But they're allowed to live there before the daycare is established because they already lived there. See what I'm saying? So this would require the check on the front end to see, is anyone already there?
Ms. White.
I'm gonna have to add a piece to this, that planning needs to have some way when they go to daycare for the check, to check all the prior letters on the legislation, that they have a way to know. So there's gonna be some documentation provided by the daycare owner for planning to do their checklist. This is, and there's all those different pieces in front of that.
Ms. Ross.
I agree with Alderman White, and I'm all for this. It's just that, I mean, I know that the ACIC, I've had a couple of instances where I've had to go check the ACIC on, not just that residents have received with, you know, when a sex offender moves into an neighborhood, and it's not on the ACIC yet. That is not the most timely manner to check.
Chief.
And I've been bugging Chief Davis.
That is basically the best way to check. Another alternative that I talked to you about is contacting our detective division, and they're gonna have the best information up to date. And if we don't know, we'll find out really quickly. So I think that's probably the thing.
I would, I mean, I don't know if we wanna add, just add this into M, but if we need to change the, the ACIC, because I know every time that, you guys are so much further ahead of ACIC, because you're out doing, when you're putting notifications out, it is not on ACIC yet. It may be wrong information, too.
Part of the issue is that they're already living there. When we find out about it, and they have three days after that to move out, and that's where your time delays come up. Eventually, it will be there, but just not at the beginning.
Right, it's just not the most timely information to check for something.
Okay, is this, is this legislation saying that if a daycare comes, wants to locate on Seventeenth Street, and there's a sex offender within two thousand feet, then they cannot have a license to put a daycare there?
No, we can't, we can't, we can't ask that. It's additional information for the applicant.
Okay, so we're just letting them know. Does a sex offender have to move after that point in time? If it was their first, if it was their first?
It's about notification.
Is this gonna put, is this gonna put a burden on you, Mr. Voels, on how you're gonna administrate this?
Boy, I understand that we're asking the applicant to check, see if there's that type resident within two thousand feet of the location. So the burden would be on the applicant, but I have a feeling it's definitely part of the.
Ms. Ross.
I would rather staff check with the North Rock Police Department, the sex offender notification officer. That would be much, I would, I would much rather than leaving it up to the applicant. So I would rather, and I don't know if we have to change that or some more. And, and one thing I'd like to say is, I don't remember if there was a daycare application here, and there was a mention of, you know, sex offenders in the neighborhood and everything. This is just another to address that issue that was up to that woman.
Okay. I don't know, we, we might need a motion to amend on that to direct, or I can direct planning, I don't care, whatever y'all thinks about.
No, if I have to, we're not all here, we wanted to.
Let's do that amendment then.
Learning, or, Mr. Carter, do you think?
How would that read?
Do your magic stuff.
Are we substituting that, that staff do this check rather than the applicant?
Ms. White.
Or, or jump in where?
My original intent was that the prospective owner would do it, and then staff would, and staff would check it in, with all the other checks that they have to make following a daycare application. However, if we wanted to have, require that they check through our North Rock, sex offender, police officer, I'm fine with that. If that's, can we direct that?
I, I think that you can. You, you can certainly direct that the owner or staff would check, just like right here, it's directed through the ACIC, it's like we direct that that's just a local police records check, you know, it's confirmed through North Rock Police Department. That's a pretty simple amendment. I, I want you to be cognizant of the fact that when, if you say that staff is going to perform that check.
It puts the liability on us.
It puts it on us, and we get between the applicant and, and the neighbors, you know, who may or may not support this matter, and then we're perceived as being biased from time to time, when we're simply trying to report facts, we're still not perceived as biased. So oftentimes, especially with our notice and things like that, we place a burden on the, on the applicant, so that we can sit as an impartial judge, if you will, on the applications being made, or to say whether or not that was done properly.
I think what Chief Davis said, then, would it still be better to go through our police department for that check? Can that be required to go there instead of an independent check?
It, it certainly could, and I think it's a pretty easy amendment to, to change from where the, the sex offender residence check, instead of being performed through the website of the ACIC, it would be performed through the North Rock Police Department according to their rules and procedures.
I'm fine with that.
So we're saying, do we need to amend this or not?
I would recommend amending the language that you have right now, and if you give me fifteen seconds, I can.
You got it. Comments?
While he's writing, how will the applicant document that they've checked the appropriate area? I mean, is there a, will the North Rock Police issue a memo or a letter saying that they've checked that area? Are we taking the applicant's word? I mean, how, do we know which blocks have been checked and corresponding to this area? I'm just kinda curious.
Chief, could you answer?
I'm, I'm, I'm saying what planning was gonna take care of that, we would, we contacted with check, and we'll let them know, and, because they may have other objectives, I'm not aware of, I can just speak for the sex offender department.
So your office will send it directly to planning?
If that's what's decided here tonight.
Right, the, the, the daycare applicant needs to be included for that, as, as well.
I, I guess the question is, is if an applicant comes to you and requests this information about a level three, level four sex offender living within two thousand feet of a given site, your ability to have the administrative processes in place to make it happen in a real, in non-burdens and fashion? I mean, is that a realistic thing?
That's correct, but I, that person, how we wanna know, I guess the question is, we give them that information, then they're gonna go back and hopefully give it to somebody, and that's why I was saying planning.
It would be their burden as part of their application. Have whatever letter you hand them include that as part of their application.
That's no problem.
We're only talking about, what, one a month?
One a month.
One a month. Ms. Ross.
I know I'm making this more complicated than it should be. So when an applicant applies to planning, then planning will tell them that they need to get that letter. So they will get the letter from the North Rock Police Department, and then they will return the letter to planning, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're doing, they're doing, they're just like, okay, gotcha.
There you go. And I would recommend as a consideration for amendment, if you look in, in the second line, to strike the words beginning by and through link in the third line, and to replace those with words through the North of the Rock Police Department according to their rules and procedures.
Okay, Ms. White, we got that? Ms. Ross?
Oh, one thing, we charge a fee for this, for reporting? Because I, I'm just curious, is there a fee? Do you charge a fee?
No, it would, it'd take a lot longer just to work up the fee than it would.
Okay, all right, I'll put that in your fee.
Okay, is everybody all right with the amendment? Mr. Baxter, you all right with it?
I, I've read the movement.
Do I have a motion to approve the amendment?
Some moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Motion amended?
Thank you.
Motion?
Some move.
Some moved, I'm sorry.
Second. Do we get a second? All right, on the motion.
Motion amended, Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Completing business, and Mayor, you asked me to remind you to bring up the Memorial Day meeting.
Correct, thank you very much. The Memorial, Memorial Day, Monday, twenty seventh. We normally move to the next night, which would be Tuesday, the twenty eighth. I just wanted to make sure that was all right with everyone to do that. Ms. Robinson.
I'd just like to say that the month of April is Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, and I just wanted to make that announcement to make you all aware of that.
Thank you very much, Ms. White.
May I just say, any, any chance we could move it to the Friday before?
I, I wouldn't wanna do it to Friday before, more we can know.
Okay, just asked.
Also, Mayor, be mindful, there will be several, several graduations going on in Horizon during that time of year, so just be mindful of that. We can't find a parking place, it's just generally for.
Okay, well, if.
You want to do Thursday, the thirtieth?
I, I don't care.
Oh, we could.
You gonna be out of town, Ms. White? Is that why you wanna do it that way?
I was trying to, I was trying to, I'm working something.
Just be careful. Tuesday, the twenty eighth will be our next council meeting.
The next one, the Memorial Day meeting.
Yeah, exactly, okay, all right. Comments from the council?
So do we decide on eight?
Twenty eighth.
The twenty eighth.
Okay.
And I'll remind Mayor Smith, if there's a Horizon event to arrange for parking for Council Mayor.
No problem. Okay, any comments from council?
We're announcing, what month, April is, Fair Housing Month as well.
Our well-known knowledge tonight. Ms. White, Ms. Ross.
Also, keep American people.
Wow. All right, somebody else got a little bit, I mean, Debbie?
Well, I think I'm gonna break the cycle here, because he's gotta do it. I just wanna remind everyone, door to door peddlers, they are not allowed to be at your house on a Saturday night at nine thirty. If you do have them at your house at nine, after sundown, or whatever, call somebody on two, three, four, the non-emergency police number, and they do have a North Rock City license.
Okay, anybody else? All right, let's go to public comments section, Mr. Baxter.
I'm just kinda curious, I know that when we, we first entertained the idea of the bigger recycle bins from waste management, people were taken aback. However, now that that's been in place for almost, I guess we're coming up on a year now, but I think the number of recycling that's been going on in the city the last year is just phenomenal. I've had folks say, hey, man, can we get this thing, you know, more often a week or every other week? I said, well, you can get you another bin. Which led me to, to ask the question, how are we doing with our normal sanitation pickup? Is that, is the amount that we're moving through sanitation is going down?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're, we're looking into all sorts of different options right now, because that volume has gone down, and we're looking at different ways to change somewhat the way that we do sanitation business right now. I, I think that Chief Brady and I, and Harold Ford are going to, we're already, have gathered the numbers, and we're gonna look at it, come up with some options for y'all to consider, and also give you the amount of money that we think that we can save by tweaking our process right now. But I agree, recycling's a great, you know, we could've gone to the bigger one, and we had it down, but we didn't, so we're stuck with what we have now.
Yes, sir, Mr. Taylor.
One comment on Mr. Baxter's statement. I, I thought that, that if you had like overflow from your recycling, they would pick those up as well. They had two bags of overflow for recycling, and they left it there.
And they, they don't, they don't get out of the truck, it's picked up.
Oh, no, they get out of the truck on my street, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, we need to get their names on here. I'll, I'll look into it. I didn't know that they even got out of the truck.
Yeah. No, 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 it did not have to be in camp because they picked up the cardboard, but they didn't pick up the, the items that they had bagged up.
Well, yeah, because I always have to carry, I thought it was responsible, have to carry it over. Mr. Height.
There, there has an occasion when one of the waste management trucks that comes around is a regular garbage type truck, and it didn't have the means of, and they'll pick up, they'll pick up stuff that's beside the regular recycling bins, but if they're, if they're kind of a regular recycling truck, they don't, it's only food, and that's one reason that.
So you're saying that they might have trucked out their normal garbage truck?
If they're using a normal garbage truck, they probably. I, I would agree with that argument, but there was also a long tube box, and it was not in the recycling bin, and they got that, but they didn't get the other overflow.
He grabbed it, he was a big grabber. I, I have a meeting with them tomorrow on recycling issues, so I'll try to get some clarification for it.
Mayor, are those, those bins out there, the old, I guess, Harbors or Kroger out there at one oh seven in North Hills? There's bins out there, right?
Recycled bins?
Are those ours?
Sure would.
Okay, so we don't have any place in the city we can take excess if we had a president?
No, I think, I think they're still doing it at Kroger McCain and, and North Hills, aren't they?
Yeah. That's the only place that we.
Yeah.
Am I, do we have any other place, maybe?
Yeah, the problem we have, and we, we had to do a lot of begging for Kroger to allow that to stay, is that when, when they used to, when they'd get full, then people would just lay the stuff on the parking lots. But now that we've got this type of system, they might not get as full, so if you feel like we need to start looking for other off-site locations, we could certainly look at that. Any other questions, comments, about the council? I've got a public comments section, three minutes, please, per speaker. First one I've got here is Sharma, last name Sharma, fifty sixteen Parker Street.
Hello, everyone. Since it's time to see this meeting, I want to thank you, everyone, for doing such a great job. You guys take a lot of responsibility to keep us safe and keep the city clean and organized. With that, I have a couple of requests here. We have a house on twenty five twenty Parker, and there seems to be a ditch behind that house, which is being used as a big trash can. People are dumping a lot of broken furniture and stale food and stuff like that. So I was just, wanted to see if anybody of you are aware of that. If not, then what do we need to do? We have contacted our code officers, and we have tried to contact some other people also, but we haven't found any resolutions, so we'd be very thankful if we could, if we could something.
Do you own twenty five twenty Parker?
My family does, I'm representing them.
And are there people living there?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
Okay.
It can come.